Okay, let's call the Sparks City Council Meeting of July 24, 2017 to order with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini?
Here.
Councilmembers Abbott?
Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Bybee?
Here.
Deere?
Here.
City Attorney Adams?
Here.
City Manager Driscoll?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
If you'll all stand, please, for the invocation speaker Pastor Barb West from the Sparks Church of the Nazarene. And I apologize Pastor, I'm not able to stand, so...
That's quite all right. Thank you for your introduction. Would you all join me in prayer and bow your heads? Our Heavenly Father, first of all, we would ask you to bless the United States of America and Nevada and our city, Lord. And we're so thankful that these fine leaders are in place to guide us and get us through this day and the future here in our beloved city Sparks. And so we ask you, Lord, to impart your wisdom to Mayor Martini and all of this fine council. And we pray too, Lord, that you would be with them as they take us to the next step here in Sparks. Thank you that we are creating jobs and growing. And thank you too, Lord, for the youth who have made so many accomplishments. And we pray that you will guide them as they become the next leaders in our city. So we want to thank you most of all for who you are and what you're going to do through this meeting. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you Barbara, I appreciate that. Remain standing, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Landslide, did you, Mr. Abbott? Mr. Abbott, could you lead us?
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may all be seated, please. Next we have public comment. If you want to speak under public comment, please fill out one of these cards and get it up to our clerk and she'll get you on the agenda for three minutes. Okay, first we have anonymous. Leading off the show there, dear.
I was assured this is on, I hope that is so. Mayor, members of the council, once again I'm speaking anonymously due to the pushback that we survivors of domestic violence and our children who are survivors of domestic violence are getting from the government. Updating you on our legal causes of action against you individually. And be sure to have your attorney, Mr. Adams, explain to you what individually means because the state legislature changed NRS 41 due to all of the lawsuits that are coming forward by the minor aged children. The graphic that you see is a graphic of protection orders for survivors of domestic violence. And these are cases in which children were involved in the event and received protection order numbers that were received. This is the... And I'm gonna need to get a little bit closer, I hope you can still hear me. The protection orders through the years have gone in a very unusual manner. This is a temporary protection order. An extended protection order is an extension of the temporary protection order. So it's a curious statistic that you have more extensions of temporary protection orders than you have temporary protection orders. Again, another curious figure for the following year. And then in 2013 it changes from temporary protection orders are extended protection orders are almost half. The two preceding years, they were greater than. So what happened in 2013 that changed? This seminar right here. This is a seminar that was put on by Arthur Ritchie Jr. This is the list of attendees, I don't know if that can be, I guess that is. Okay, so this just gives you an idea. All the district court judges, and then there's a second page, the district court judges statewide that attended this. The seminar was by Arthur Ritchie, that you have his evidence doctrine, that's where he says that we applicants for protection orders exaggerated our statements in the applications, that the photos we submitted of our naked children evidencing all the bruises up and down their bodies are pornographic pictures and they have no probative value. And this is also the judge who stated that we only bring applications to the court for protection orders to solely the name of our attackers. And I'm not gonna have enough time to get you the rest of the information, but pardon? I know, I said I'm not going to have any more time, right. But I will be giving these documents to the clerk.
Okay, next we have the, making a presentation, we have the law firm of Bergy Hill and Moreno, is that correct? Actually, they work, actually they work at City of Sparks Francine and Alexis works for Reno and Moreno still hadn't figured out who he's working with.
All right. Thank you, councilmembers. I'm here, my name Francine Burge for the record, City of Sparks. In 2015, we put on a, through the City of Sparks, City of Reno and RSCBA, we did a special event survey. Because we knew of some of the stuff going on downtown, more buildings, less parking, we added some questions about parking in our survey. And we found out through that survey that people are not inclined to use public transit and parking was a very important element when choosing to go to an event. But at the same time, another question that we asked told us that more than half of the respondents weren't apt to using shuttles or ride shares if it was more available or if they knew about it. So last year, I worked with both Alexis and Reno, and Marina, with Michael from RTC and we put together...
When we met, we decided, okay, yes, we all have graphics, people at the City of Reno, City of Sparks, RTC, but we want to make this campaign cool. So, to help us, don't drive or ride, I don't know if you can see it on the screen, but you can see your graphic, it's a catchy design, hopefully something that can carry on for a few seasons, a few event seasons, to get people thinking about, blocking their bikes to events as well as driving with friends.
We're excited to have this collaboration between the City of Reno, City of Sparks and RTC. You know, it's a great opportunity to promote alternative ways to get to events. And we created this campaign and we also have a website, don'tdriveorride.com. And if you go to that website, it lists the special events and which bus routes you can take to those special events. You have some posters that were distributed, we have, we can also personalize those posters for the specific special events. So we're working with a lot of the promoters in the area to help us promote this, to get people to their events using transit, busing, biking or walking. So I'm gonna yield the rest of my time to a video. And I hope it works.
When you go to special events, it can mean a lot of traffic and parking problems. But it doesn't have to be that way. Don't drive, arrive. Choose to walk, ride a bike or ride transit. Many special events are conveniently served by the RTC. Know exactly how long before your bus arrives when you download the next bus app for your smartphone. Don't drive, arrive. Go to don'tdrivearrive.com for shuttle information, routes and schedules.
So we thank you for your time and encourage you to share the information with your constituents. And if you would like information to share through social media or other means of communications, we're happy to provide that information to you as well.
Thanks guys, we appreciate it, we got some questions, so. This is very, 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 very important, people who need to start knowing that they have a way to get to special events. So I started talking, 12 years ago when we started really working hard on downtown. Because you could see it coming, there was no doubt about it, land was going away, people were buying it, parking lots gone, so it was very critical.
Thank you for the presentation, I think it's vitally important, but my question was, on the different special events, I know like for the 4th of July, you had special shuttles and buses that were running from a set location, from Iron Horse Shopping Center. How can people find out for hot August nights, for the balloon races, is it Reed High School, is that all online that they can find for? It's not just your regular routes, am I, or am I wrong, or is it special buses that will be running from special locations?
Each event will conduct their own transportation services. The Nugget, for example, reached out to us, and so we partnered with them and All West to provide the shuttle service to and from Iron Horse to Victorian Square. So what we're hoping to do is, again, Hot August Nights will have the information for Don't Drive Arrive, and if they have shuttle information, we can partner with them so that we can coordinate and maximize the communication to the public to let them know that there are other ways to get to an event other than driving a car.
And the Don't Drive Arrive webpage, so don'tdrivearrive.com will get that information. So we're gathering RTC, City of Sparks, City of Reno, so you know which way to go, if you need to park at Reed High School to go to balloon races, for example, that will be there too. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thanks folks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Public comment, next we have Wesley Griffin. Let's talk about Wild Creek.
All right. And, you know, we have a public asset, but the cost of replacement is going to be thirty million now. Okay, William, do... This asset, go to another case, I miss it down, you can take it. What if it was being proposed, that we quit a school on the Washoe County... What would it take for the City of Sparks to provide that to their citizens? Do you have north of thirty million dollars to provide this kind of an asset? And yet we're gonna stand by, maybe we are a bunch of country bumpkins over here. I've found it very interesting that when this was first proposed, one of your members here pointed out that what they were proposing, they were gonna try to transfer the land by August. And he said that, is that better? He said that for them to do that by August, government would have to be working at the speed of light. Interestingly enough, it didn't take too long and they backed off of that. And they said, oh no, that's not really what we meant, we just need access to it. But let me just ask you, do you think if everybody had bought into that, that land wouldn't have transferred? And then we could very well have not only lost a golf course, but a school too, because very likely they're gonna find problems with trying to build a school over there. But they were trying to do, you know, a quick one on us. Transfer the land, now we no longer have our golf course nor a school site. We're talking a cost here probably north of two hundred million dollars to build that school. Hundred and ten million dollars has been budgeted. And talking with the Washington School District the other day, they said there's an extra hundred million dollars in case we can't do it for a hundred and ten. And they're projecting construction costs to be going up like fifteen percent a year. Thank you.
Is this on? Yeah. Hi ladies and gentlemen, I'm here to try and speak about the Wild Creek Golf Course and about how, I don't have that much of a skin in the game, because I can barely see it from where I live. But I've been examining this on the basis of things that would be an improvement for the school system rather than a huge project that would centralize the school system. My main thing is that there are other sites which would be probably equally as good or better. I mean, the place where they're building this school up in, you know, it's in Sparks, I assume, the high school or the junior high or whatever it is, the middle school up in Spanish Springs, that'd be a great place for it because that's where the real growth of our area is. They're not building houses south of McCarran, up by the golf course, they're not building houses in Sun Valley, they're building them in Spanish Springs, where the student population is gonna really increase. I have a second thing though, all property is already owned and acquired by the school system, whether, what level of school system, at TMCC where there is a high school already. And the expansion of that high school would be an advantage because they could jointly fund parking structures, things like that, with TMCC and get federal grant money to do it, which would lower your costs, right? Infrastructure is already there. And I know that you guys aren't specifically in a position to say yes or no, because this is, you know, the school district and the RSCBA, the Washoe County Commissioners, you know, who really is the RSCBA, you know? Anyway, the one main thing that we are short of in our school system here in Washoe County is graduation rate. Our rate of people going on to college or going on into trade schools, things like that, is very, very low. Hug High is an example of how bad it can be. And that's not just the students, that has to do with factors like what's gonna make them think more about going on and staying in school and moving on and graduating. And I think the association, the propinquity of students from the junior college mixing with the students from the high school, if they build it at the TMCC expansion of the high school that's up there. That is one thing that would make it worthwhile for the students. And it's not something that's, something that's gonna be good for the board, it's not gonna be them having a nice palatial meeting, you know, venue for holding their meetings or whatever, but it would be something that would be good for the students. Thank you.
Yes, Essie?
Well hello to all of you again. I'm here to fight for Wild Creek Golf Course. I really believe and with all my heart that this is a big, very big mistake. This is a beautiful area, it's an open area. And the students, it's just unbelievable what will happen with the traffic, it's unbelievable what will happen with the land, with the animals and the people that have lived there forever. I've lived there forty years and I tell you, I cannot tell you enough wonderful things that have happened at Golf Course. It's a park, it's an open area, it should remain an open area. And if Jerry Grohl was here, he used to help fight with us to keep the land. And he would be right here sitting next to me and saying, it's an open area, it's a recreation, it's for recreation only and it should not be a school. And I cannot see, understand the thinking that it's only two hundred thousand deficit when that can be arranged, I would think that they could maybe do the refinancing and in three years' time, this water will be paid off and that golf course will pay for itself. And another thing too, the convention center is over a million dollars deficit. Then the bowling stadium is a million dollar deficit. Now, aren't you getting rid of the wrong property? Shouldn't you just be getting rid of one of the others that are, you know, so in debt? And it's just unbelievable. I know, I'm a housewife and I've helped my husband for forty-five years and I've run his business and paid his bills and balanced my accounts, and there's something wrong with this picture. You should not be letting this school spend all this money. It should be saved for the kids, it should be spent wisely, not wasted away on a golf course that may flood, maybe just like Lemon Valley. You'll have all these different problems here for all people. I just cannot believe that this could be a possible thing. And I'm just so sorry that you guys are going along with this and I hope you change your minds, because this is an open area, it's beautiful for the animals, for the people, the golfers, I hear them go by, they're having a wonderful time. And I just think it's a big mistake. And I just pray to God that you will please see and listen to what I'm saying, because you're making a terrible mistake to get rid of this beautiful, open area. It's wonderful. And there's all the airplanes that come over. And we had an interview the other day with one of the TV stations, they almost had to stop talking to us because of the... So when you put that in, there has to be extra insulation, there has to be a flood plane that has to be corrected, there has to be some of the rocks that are up above that they can't even change some of the golf areas because the stones are so hard. Now, isn't this a terrible expensive project? You should be on a flat land or something. Thank you.
Anyone else? Public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment, bring them back to the council for action. Let's move on to number five, agenda, anybody want to take anything out of order or I need a motion? Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve the agendas outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Minutes, Teresa, okay? I want it well noted. Minutes, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the regular scheduled Sparks City Council Meeting of July 10, 2017. Any omissions, deletions, corrections? Not looking for a motion, Mr. Deere?
Move to approve?
Second. Let's move on to announcements, presentations. Seven point one, presentation, NDOT Spaghetti Bowl Project. Welcome sir, please give us your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers, for the record, John Johnson, project manager of the NDOT. Before we get started, I just want to say thank you to the opportunity of others to think about a very large but exciting project here in Reno Sparks area, reconstruction of the spaghetti bowl and the freeway system surrounding it. So just to give you guys some background really quick, the spaghetti bowl was originally designed and constructed in late sixties, early seventies. And at the time, the population was roughly about a hundred and thirty thousand people. And today we're about four hundred and twenty thousand and increasing daily with a lot of the growth here. So long story short, this spaghetti bowl has served this community for over forty-five years. We've done a number of Band-Aid fixes over the years to try to keep it going, but it's come time that we bring it up to standard to accommodate the traffic that we have today and in the future. We are at the very beginning of this project, we're just starting the environmental process or the NEPA process, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. But to give you a sense of the study limits or the areas that we're looking at with this environmental process, it's a very large project. So on the north end, North McCarron, Clare Acre on 395, all the way south down to about Moana on 580. And west in Reno there, the Sierra Virginia Center Street interchange and all the way out east here in Sparks to Pyramid and possibly even McCarron. So it's a very, very large project that we're gonna be looking at and studying. So why do we need this project? And I think most of us who've been here a long time and we drive it every day, we see a lot of the backups, we see a lot of the accidents, you know, the primary need we need to address here is safety and improving the safety of the corridor. And I'll show you some slides on the, or show you some graphics on the next slide, but we're averaging about two to three crashes a day within that footprint, and that's very high. And then to, you know, address the congestion that we have today and for the future as well, looking out, you know, 2040, what's our traffic volume's gonna look like and make sure that we build a project that's gonna be long lasting. And then it also fits with, you know, the regional plan with what the cities, with RTC, everybody's doing and making sure that it all works together. So just a few graphics, I won't spend a lot of time on this, but the graphic on the left, which is essentially the footprint of our study area, what that represents, the colors is accidents within the freeway system. And you can see the green meaning that we're well below the state average in terms of incidents, the red meaning two hundred percent or more above the state average in terms of accidents. And you can see right there that there's a lot of red and orange within the footprint of our study limits. So just speaking to the need that addressing safety is a number one priority. Just in, you know, some of the reasons why we have so many incidents, why we have so many backups, a lot of bottlenecks. Right here is just a graphic of the spaghetti bowl itself and we can identify three right now that we all drive every day. And probably even out here, the biggest one is by the Nugget, there on the bridges, you know, every single morning and afternoon. So addressing, you know, that, getting good lane balance, providing the room that we need on the freeway system to keep traffic moving and moving safely. So a little bit about the environmental or NEPA process and bear with me if you, if you're very familiar with this, but NEPA is a federal law, it was passed in the seventies, I believe, or early seventies or late sixties. But essentially, it's a process that evaluates the impacts that a project of this magnitude has on the community. But probably more importantly is that it gives the public, the agencies, everybody in the community, an opportunity to be a part of it, to provide feedback and input so that as we move through this, that we select the right... as we move through this, that we select the right project for the community itself. Now, there's different levels of documents that come out of the NEPA process, where the project this big will certainly have probably the highest level, an environmental impact statement, and that's what you see if they're EIS, what I'm referring to. So what you can expect to see as we move through this process, the first step is identifying what's the purpose and what's the need of the project, which I just spoke briefly about, the congestion, the safety, the bottlenecks, the design that's outdated. And then from that, we develop alternatives, a number of alternatives that meet that purpose and need specifically. And from there, we analyze all the impacts it has. And so up here, we say environmental and what that means. There's the environment side, but there's also the people side, as I call it, which is looking at, you know, how does it benefit, or how does it impact residents, businesses, people getting to and from work, things of that nature. So we look at all of it. We're going to compare all those alternatives the same way across the board. And then hopefully from that, one of those alternatives comes forward as the preferred alternative or what this project is going to be. So you'll see that here over the next year and a half to two years as we move through this process. Now, these processes take a long time and I'll talk about schedule in a second, but one of the keys to our success in moving through this process and getting this project done is going to be communication and coordination with not just yourselves, but the staff here at the city, as well as other agencies and the community at large. You know, our goal is to make sure that everybody here, that there's no surprises, that everybody knows what we're doing, what this project is all about. And if there are issues, that we can talk about them early on and resolve them so that we get the project right. I mean, this is, the spaghetti bowl is the heart of the transportation system here in the community and it's going to be a big project and we want it to last a very long time. So it's important that we make sure that we create a project that's a right fit for the community. And with that being said, here's a timeline of this project, or at least the NEPA project. So there on the left is some of the phases of a project. We've moved through the planning process and we're right there at the second one, the NEPA. That's the environmental phase. And once that's completed, then we can move into property acquisitions, engineering before we get to construction. And so the schedule you see there on the right is for the environmental process only, three and a half years. And three and a half years is a long time. It's three and a half years. But to put it into context, projects of this size can take closer to a decade just to get through this. So we're fast tracking this to the best of our abilities. We want to get out there and start making improvements as soon as possible, but it is a long process. We got the right team in place and today, we're moving along and tracking very well with our goal to get this done in three and a half years. So again, communication, there's a number of things that we're doing and that we're going to continue to do. Right now, up until this point, I think we officially got kicked off in February and March in this year. We've been spending a considerable amount of time trying to reach out to all of you as well as the staff here, a lot of the major businesses in the area. So here's a number of them listed that, and we've met with all of them except for, I think, Remza and Q and D at this point. But we're trying to get out there and understand how people use the freeway, how it impacts their businesses, what would improve it, what would maintain it. Again, trying to get this project right for everyone here in the community. But a couple of things to note coming up, we will have two additional, or we'll have two more public meetings here in September. At that time, we hope to roll out those alternatives to the public to get feedback. And then from there, we're going to be, this fall, I mean, going to a lot of the Cabs, the Navs, HOAs, just trying to get out to as many folks as we can, again, to let everybody know what we're doing, try to get the feedback that we can so we can get this project right. Now, moving forward, a couple of other things. I mean, the outreach is a big part of this. As I mentioned, we're currently in the process of developing those concepts. We want to bring them to the public in September and then we'll continue to modify and tweak those throughout the rest of the year. Then next summer, about this time is when we'll have the draft environmental impact statement, ready for public review and comment with the public and the agencies and everything So here's my contact information to put that up there. At any time, should anyone have any questions, please feel free. And we have a website to, you can reach me through there. You can email me. As we create more and more information, we're going to post it to the website here. Please do not hesitate to reach out. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Question for Mr. Dare.
Question for you. So you mentioned there are going to be meetings in September?
Correct.
So one of those, are both of those in Sparks? I know this affects the whole region. Do you have anything right here in Sparks that we can help get out to in front of our community as well here?
We will, and we're working on scheduling those. So we'll have one in Reno and one here in Sparks. We did hold two public meetings in April and we did the same. One night, we held them at Worcester High School and then one night here at the Sparks Library.
How well was that attended, if you mind me asking?
Very well. I think, I could be wrong, but I think the Sparks one, we had close to 60 people attend that night. So it was very well attended. We got a lot of great feedback and we hope to continue that, especially now that we have alternatives for people to look at.
We all know, all of us, whether you live in Reno or Sparks, and the biggest bottleneck is at the Nugget. And I know that's been ongoing with the Nuggets, you know, new owners and everything there. Is that something that is going to be hopefully a focal point of widening, being able to widen the freeway at the Nugget because it by far, and with the Tri-Center, I mean, we are, we are all the way past Vista. The traffic is backed up, but it's all backing up there at the Nugget, really.
Yes, and that is a focal point. That's certainly one of the bigger challenges on the project, but that's something that we want to address with this project, is how we're going to widen that section. It'll be challenging and we're looking at some different ways of doing that, but it's certainly part of the project and we know that we need to address that and do something with it.
Perfect. And then another quick question. Curious, because the spaghetti bowl has been a headache for all of us for so many years, why it took so long to get to this point where we're just starting and environmental that takes, I understand the long process, but is there not a reason if we're more than tripled our population that this process didn't start earlier?
No, I'm not sure why it didn't start earlier or, but I do know that for many years, we've tried to do smaller projects, knowing that whatever we do with the spaghetti bowl, it's going to impact everybody in the region. I mean, the construction of that will impact everyone in some, in some way, just because it's, that's the way to get around. And I think for many years, we've tried to make the improvements, the smaller improvements that we can to get by as long as we can, knowing that. But outside of that, I'm not sure why it's now versus then, but I do know that we recognize the need and that's why we're trying to move this as quickly as we can.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Smith?
Thanks for the report, Nick. You know, people sitting here and probably watching on TV, and there's lots of those folks out there too, but when they see us working on the spaghetti bowl all the time, they wonder, "What are we going to do now?" And when we talked about this project, and by the way, I think it's moving along pretty quickly, actually, the most, the Southeast Connector or the Veterans Parkway was approved in 1964 and we're just now completing it. So, so this project is a big, huge project. It's going to benefit the north valleys. They want us to fix those roads out there also, but it'll just get into the traffic faster. So this is, this is critical for the whole area, Sparks, Reno and the county. I'm very confident you guys are going to have plenty of outreach. I know the RTC does things in collaboration with the, with NDOT. Let's get this thing done and a promise was made, this will be the last time we fix this. One more time and make it right. So appreciate that.
Anyone else? One more time and make it right.
One more time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming by.
Thank you.
Okay, 7.2 is a presentation, Nevada chapter of the American Planning Association.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city, for the record. My name is Frederick Steyman. I am the chapter secretary for the Nevada chapter of the American Planning Association, as well as an assistant research professor with the University Center for Economic Development at the University of Nevada Reno. With me is Julie Hunter. Julie is our planning official development officer for the chapter, and she also works for Washoe County and the AQMD. It's my pleasure on behalf of the Nevada chapter of the American Planning Association to present to each one of you a copy of the recently completed and published Nevada Planning Guide, as produced jointly between the Nevada chapter of the American Planning Association and the University Center for Economic Development. The mission of the Nevada chapter of the American Planning Association, or Nevada APA, is to essentially provide educational and professional development opportunities for elected and appointed officials throughout the state, as well as government executives and staff and members of the general public who are interested in learning more about the wide universe of planning. Our mission at the University Center for Economic Development is very similar in that we work with local governments, state agencies and various public and private entities on education, professional development and outreach efforts as well. And the Nevada Planning Guide is really kind of the culmination of those two efforts and partnership between the chapter and the center. The guide itself, over about a year and a half period, had eight full-time volunteer writers. It produced the seven chapters on various items related to planning, as well as topics related to the state open meeting laws, state code of administrative ethics, as it applies to the world of planning as well. We are in the process of providing this guide to all elected and appointed boards in the state of Nevada that are interested in hearing about us. The material in the guide itself is also available online on the chapter's website, as well as the website of the University Center for Economic Development. So anyone can download a copy for free at no cost as many times as you'd like. There are additional materials also included in the guide itself, including information about membership in the chapter and information about upcoming chapter and university center for economic development events and professional development opportunities.
Yes, sure. Again, for the record, Julie Hunter, senior planner at the Washoe County Health District Air Quality Management Division and was recently appointed as a planning official development officer. And I really just serve as a reference person to planning officials, elected and appointed officials, to provide information or the exchange of information and ideas to elected and appointed officials, like training materials, like we just said, the planning guide and workshops. So if you're interested in a specific planning topic or a workshop or hearing from a subject matter expert, we can provide that in a workshop forum or a social event or even a specific training. So our information is on the APA website. That's in the planning guide and feel free to contact us if you, if you'd like to hear anything specific. And that's all we have. If you have any questions.
I just wanted to make a comment that like two and a half years ago, planning was the one area that, I mean, my learning curve was here, but it was here for, I'm, planning is so complicated. I mean, it really is a science. And so for any of us who haven't ever worked in planning, it is, it's complex. And so I look at this as an incredible resource. I just glanced at the glossary and there are lots of, it looks like really good information and things that'd be useful for us. So thank you so much for the work you've done because I know, I know I'll use it for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, let's move on to consent items, I believe. Eight one and eight two. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Okay, seeing none being pulled, please give me a motion, Mr. Dare.
I move to approve the consent items as they are.
Of second. Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Dare, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve eight one and eight two consent items. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Please vote. Please vote.
Shirley.
Did you still?
Can you clear it back there and we'll try again? Please vote.
You're a no vote.
No. I vote, I hit yes. My screen never came on.
Let the record show that Ms. Bybee voted yes on this.
I voted yes. My screen never came up.
Okay, and it's a unanimous decision? You got that, Teresa?
Got it.
Okay.
It never, the screen never turned on.
General business, presentation, discussion and possible approval of staffing complement changes needed to accommodate proposed staffing changes within the Community Services Department and Financial Services Department. Mindy, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. Mindy Falk, Human Resources Manager, for the record. Today, for your consideration of the complement change in our finance department, a retirement of the senior admin analyst at Tom Wharf has prompted the city to evaluate the work in both Community Services and Finance. As a result of this analysis, the two departments are recommending that the position that was formerly out of Tom Wharf be relocated to Finance and re-titled to Senior Accountant. This will allow the position to provide operating capital and budget functions for Tom Wharf, as well as supervise other finance staff here at City Hall. The recommendation today does not increase any additional costs in the fiscal 18 budget. And with that, Jeff, do you have any comments you'd like to add?
No. Wrong for the record, I'm just here to, you know, look pretty if I can possibly do that or answer your questions. First one is a...
You're half right.
Question, Mr. Dare.
You said it doesn't affect this year's budget, but because it's a change in title, does that mean in the year to come, it's bound to change?
Bound to, yes, but probably not likely for several years.
Okay. It's not an immediate...
Yeah, as people could progress through the, through the, what essentially is happening is we're replacing somebody who was at the top of the range and ultimately, you know, yeah, and that'll take a few years.
Anyone else? Questions? Looking for motion?
I move, do you want me to? I'm not going to.
I move to approve.
Mr. Abbott, Mr. Dare, Mr. Abbott.
It's been moved by Mr. Dare and seconded by Mr. Abbott to approve.
Seeing none, please vote.
Mr. Mayor, can we do a voice vote, please?
I'm just kidding.
Bybee's gone.
Okay, can we do a voice vote? Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Aye.
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 Pose. Yeah, the ayes have it. That's good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
9.2, consideration and possible approval of reimbursement to the city of Reno in the amount of $567,587.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Michael Drinkwater, Treatment Plant Manager. You have before you today a consideration for the approval of a reimbursement to the city of Reno for a construction project at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. This particular project is the rehabilitation of the HVAC systems on six of our smaller buildings scattered throughout the plant. This is a project that is in the approved, the JCC-approved Tom Wharf CIP. It was contemplated last year, funding was allocated. Reno, as is customary, held the bid. The low apparent bidder was, or the lowest responsive bidder, rather, was AMI and the prices were such that they were quite favorable for us. So we bid it with a base bid and three alternates and we're asking to approve the reimbursement for the base plus the three alternates to do all of the project at this time because it fell within the allocated funding. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Drinkwater. Questions, looking for motion?
I move that the city council award the approval of reimbursement to the city of Reno for Spark share of the various buildings HVAC replacement project in an amount not to exceed $567,508.96.
Second. Motion by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve 9.2. Is outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Nine three, is that you two, Mr. Drinkwater?
Yes, sir.
Creation and possible approval of reimbursement to the city of Sparks in the amount of $161,226.11 for Spark share of contract with KG Walters Construction. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Again, Michael Drinkwater, Treatment Plant Manager. This project, as the previous item, is a capital improvement project that is in the JCC-approved capital improvement plan for Tom Wharf for this fiscal year. As you all are familiar, you've all been to the plant. We have 14 clarifiers, some of which date back to 1964. This particular one is one of those and we try to rehabilitate one of them every year. So as is customary, Reno manages the capital improvement program. They put the plans together, put it out to bid. KG Walters was the low responsive bidder, so we're looking for your permission to give Reno the okay to reimburse them so we can award, move this project forward.
Questions, Mr. Smith? I move to approve the reimbursement for the city of Reno for the Spark share of the construction of the 2017 Clarifier Rehab Project in the amount not to exceed $161,226.11. Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve nine point three, as outlined by staff. Did you have a question, Mr. Dare, or...
No, sir.
Is outlined by staff. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, please vote. Well, it looks like you already did that. And it seems like it's a unanimous decision again.
Sir.
Good God, Mike.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to public hearing and action item. Public hearing, consideration of proposal, possible approval of the program year three.
For the record, George Graham, Housing Specialist, City of Sparks. Today, what you have before you is a presentation of staff recommendation to submit and approve the annual action plan, application that we submit, annual action plan that we submit to HUD, as part in accordance with our five-year consolidated plan. We're required to submit the annual action plan. The annual action plan entails activities such as contribution for our, support of our community assistance center, homeless center, also for supporting of the fair housing initiatives and activities, as well as ending efforts of ending homelessness. Also, it provides pedestrian improvements will be in the same area of, as the previous years. Again, this is program year three of that, and where pedestrian improvements entails sidewalks replacement, curbs, and pavements, and that particular thing that we've been performing. In addition, there's housing rehabilitation, funding, and also some program income to continue with that program, the housing rehabilitation, as well as the emergency repair grant program. So this is an overview of all what the annual action plan entails, and I'm just, staff would like to recommend City Council's approval of the annual action plan that can be submitted to HUD, Department of Housing and Urban Development. At any, at this time, I'd like to address any questions.
Questions? Forward.
Lawson? I move to approve the proposed project funding allocations and submit the program year three. Oh, it's public, isn't it?
Yeah, it's public here.
Sorry. Sorry, drop the gun.
It's a public hearing. I'll open it to the public for hearing. Anyone want to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, I'll close the meeting, hearing, and bring it back to council for action.
You try again?
Yes, sir. Please.
Move to approve the proposed project funding allocations, submit the program year three fiscal year 2017-18 annual action plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second?
I'll second that with, George, this is a great program. You do well in. Thank you.
So we have a motion by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve ten point oh, public hearing item on unrelated planning. Okay, any further questions? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. You up next?
I am.
Okay, let's go to planning and zoning, public hearing and action item. Appeal of a Planning Commission decision on PCN 170030 to deny a conditional use permit request to allow a minor recreational facility on a site 1.68 acres in size in the I Industrial Zoning District located at 11455 Deming Way, Sparks. Okay.
I'm Mayor Martini, members of City Council. I am Armando Ornelas. I am the Assistant Community Services Director, and with me is Doug Thornley, Senior Assistant City Attorney. We are here to essentially set the stage, if you will, for the applicant to make their presentation on the appeal of this item. This agenda item is an appeal of a decision the Planning Commission made on July 6th to deny a conditional use permit for a minor recreational facility on a site in the Industrial Zoning District located at 1455 Deming Way. If I may have the vicinity map. The applicant, Rival Enterprises, is proposing to operate a party room, play area, and retail store for Nerf, Nerf is in the Nerf football, related toys and accessories in a space of approximately 5,267 square feet. The retail use, the store, if you will, portion of it, is permitted by right in the industrial area, while the recreational component, which is essentially the party room and the arena, are done by conditional use permit. And as the City Council is probably aware, we have a number of these recreational facilities in our industrial area. There are seven in total. Let's see.
All the way to top right.
Okay, there you go. We have a number of these in our industrial area. There's actually seven in total that we've identified. They have been approved over the years by conditional use permit. The reason for requiring a conditional use permit in this area is that, in the industrial area, is that, A, we want to provide notice to adjacent property owners about a proposed use, but more permanently, the purpose of a conditional use permit is to be able to look at the particular site, the particular use, and identify potential conditions, or consider potential conditions, that might be required to mitigate any impacts from that use in that location. Again, this is an industrial area, and so these recreational uses were deemed in our zoning code to require this conditional use permit process. The Planning Commission reviewed the case, and they expressed and discussed their concerns regarding, in particular, whether the amount and location of off-street parking available for the use would prevent their clientele from parking on Deming Way and create any potential traffic and pedestrian safety conflicts with the large number of trucks used by neighboring businesses. So here on your screen is the building. It's a multi-tenant building. It is located at the northwest corner of East Gregg Street and Deming Way. The particular use would go in the most southern portion of the building here. Parking for the use would be along the eastern side here, as well as behind the building on the backside, and, you know, there is, there is no clear path around here in terms of, you know, this parking being really accessible, but it is available for that building. So, at the end of the day, there was public testimony from the owner of the business here, and there was concerns on the part of the Planning Commission that the truck traffic from this use would conflict with the users of this facility here, the proposed Nerf facility, and particularly at this intersection. And there was concern in part because there was, there was the view that there was insufficient parking on this site to accommodate this use on a shared basis with the other users, despite the proposed condition to limit the hours of operation from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. So, at the end of the day, on July 6th, the Planning Commission denied the application for a CUP by a three-to-two vote, and the stated basis for the motion for denial was an inability to make two findings that are required with the granting of conditional use permit. Finding C1, which is that the proposal is submitted and condition is in compliance with a comprehensive plan, so that really has to do with the use. And the second finding was that the application is compatible with the existing or permitted uses of adjacent properties. So, again, that had, that's where the adjacency to these heavy trucking uses came into play. Staff had recommended approval of the CUP, but we, you know, we did recognize that the Planning Commission's concerns were valid, particularly as to whether or not the conditions as proposed adequately mitigated the, that potential issue. In their letter appealing the Planning Commission's decision, the applicant has indicated they will provide additional documentation for the City Council to consider. With regard to the City Council's options in terms of this appeal, there is three. One is to affirm the decision of the Planning Commission to deny the conditional use permit. The second option would be to reverse the decision of the Planning Commission and approve the conditional use permit. And then the third option would be to remand the case back to the Planning Commission for further consideration, and possibly with a City Council input. That last option certainly may be, would be, would be something to really look at, because if, in fact, the applicant provides you with additional information today that the Planning Commission did not, was not able to consider, then that would give the Planning Commission that opportunity to do so. So that concludes my presentation. I don't know if Mr. Thornley has anything to add.
No, not at this time.
So, we would, we would be available to answer any questions.
Lawson?
So, what I'm kind of getting from what I've read here, that they're worried about the trucking companies are worried about getting on and off on the east side of Deming, that the parking would spill over to that side.
Yeah, that there was...
Something that we could do to make that a no parking, or limit parking?
It's my understanding, Councilman Lawson, that at present, parking on the east side is not allowed, and what the trucking company is doing is having their employees park on the east side to preclude people from parking there presently. More specifically, what the trucking...
You're saying the east side of Deming?
Yes.
So...
If I'm recalling the Planning Commission meeting correctly, that was what they were saying on the east side. What the trucking company is specifically concerned with, Councilman Lawson, is that parking on the, on the west side of Deming will interfere with truck traffic as it both returns to the yard and leaves the yard there at that intersection between Deming and Gregg.
So with regard to the, the trucking company's traffic patterns, as indicated by Mr. Cassie, who is the owner of the, of the trucking business that testified at the Planning Commission, you know, some of the, some of the trucks access the site from Clopey Lane, essentially at this intersection. Some of it occurs here at Gregg and Deming Way. And so the concern was that if, in fact, there was inadequate parking on the site to serve the business, then people would end up, you know, clientele would end up parking along the west side of Deming, and would congest and create potential, you know, dangerous conflicts between the users of this, of the recreational facility and the trucking company. So that was the express concern of Mr. Cassie at the, at the Planning Commission, per his testimony.
So, the, the trucks need to pull into that parking area to make that turn?
But generally speaking, again, if I'm recalling the testimony of Mr. Cassie correctly, Councilman Lawson, when the trucks head south on Deming, it's so that they can turn west on Gregg. They're not trying to turn across traffic on Gregg Street, and so when they turn west on Gregg, they run essentially right along where the, where the on-street parking would be on the west side of Deming, and they're concerned with...
They obviously can't park on Gregg Street. So, I mean, it seems to me logically, just put a little more red zone in there, and no parking to that corner, but I, I'm...
I don't know. I don't see, I don't see the big deal here. First. You know, it looks to me like Mr. Cassie's property, the parking is on his property, not on the, not on the street. Is that right?
Well, it's a little...
Looks like curb is to the left of those cars that are parked.
Yeah, it's a little difficult to tell from the, from the, you know, the property line as represented on the aerial, you know, it's not exact, but, you know, some of that is public right of way, some of it is...
And it's posted all the way up down on the, on the right-hand side there, no parking? I believe that.
That is correct, yeah, yeah.
So, those are cars parked on the left-hand side now, isn't it? Is that what I'm looking at?
Yeah, these are, these are parked on...
That is a parking zone?
That is, yes.
So, what I'd like to do is I'd like to hear from the rival company and have them give us their new testimony that we haven't heard yet. If they could, if you're done, we can get them down here.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Christian Meyer with Rival Enterprises, one of the owners of the business. Prepared a presentation for you here. All right, so, just to recap real quick, the reason we're here, July 6th, the Sparks Planning Commission denied our request for a conditional use permit in what I would say is pretty well-contested three-to-two vote. The Commission went against the Sparks Planning Staff Report, which actually recommended approval, as they had mentioned previously. And then what we saw as the reasons for denial were insufficient parking for the location and the intended operations, impact on the surrounding business, and customer access to the facility from the rear parking area. We're basically here today to appeal that decision to you, and we'll address each of these concerns individually, give you insight into who we are. Rival Battle Arena is the first and only indoor Nerf arena in Nevada. Think basically paintball with Nerf blasters, softball. Offers an exciting new take on the recreational group and party environment. Up to 20 customers at a time, ages six and up, will engage in battle against friends, family, coworkers in a supervised location that promotes teamwork and safe play. We've secured a nearly 5,000-square-foot warehouse, 3,000 of that used for the arena, 1,000 for the party room, about 900 for the retail space. And then basically, parents and adventure seekers are looking for a fun and active alternative to the current offerings, such as bounce houses, trampoline parks, bowling alleys. You know, we've got fly high, the batting cages, U.S. gymnastics, all in the same zoned area. And just give you an idea of sort of the look of the blasters that they'd be using. What we know is that the Sparks Planning Staff requires 23 parking spaces based on our square footage, not necessarily our capacity. An independent traffic report done by Traffic Works calculated that our peak hour trips were only 17, with 80 being the benchmark of requiring a full traffic analysis. The site in our direct building has 48 parking spaces around. That doesn't include the legal street parking and the inside island parking as well. There's an additional 41 parking spaces in the building behind us, which were never really considered by the board, and our lease allot's us 11 dedicated parking spots. There are 11 other businesses that we share the building with, and based on all of that, the Planning Commission felt without definitive knowledge that our parking would interfere with the other businesses. So again, back to the site map, you know, this is the building, here's where we're located, there's 48 spaces around here, there's additional 41 spots down here, and we didn't include any of the city street parking, or this inside island here, which people currently park in, regardless of us being there or not. Our position is that our peak days and hours of operation generally don't overlap with the other tenants. Ninety-five percent of them are Monday through Friday, 9 to 5. When they're not there, that frees up additional parking spaces. As far as our hours of operations go, we're closed Monday and Tuesday, so there's no impact whatsoever on those days that we are closed. And we're open Saturday and Sunday, which none of the other businesses in our building have posted hours of operation for those specific days, which basically means there's only three days of potential overlap, and of those three days, we're open noon to 8, with our peak hours starting at 5:00 p.m. in the evening, which leaves five to six hours of overlap each day for only three days a week. So, in addition to everything that we provided to the Planning Commission, we did a parking study based on the finding from the Planning Commission over a week period for our base operation. We counted all of the available parking spots around the building between 3:00 p.m. and 4:00 p.m., sorry, 6:00 p.m., which is the hours total, which we consider the peak overlap time between our other tenants' businesses and our business. The five-day average of available parking spaces was 26 in our immediate building, which is three more than what the Planning Staff requirement had asked for. The fewest number of available spaces never dropped below 25, still two more than the 23 requirement. And additionally, there were an average of 29 spaces in the back parking area immediately behind our facility. That makes a total of 55 spaces on average during those peak overlap business hours that are available to park in. And again, 26 on our building, 29 in this additional. Basically, addressing the traffic here with that number of allotted spaces, we don't foresee anybody parking or trying to park over on the east side of Deming. To address the impact on the surrounding businesses, there's 20 businesses between those two buildings that I showed, that we surveyed to determine our position on the operations, or their position on the operations times and parking considerations. 16 out of 20 of those signed a petition of support, a letter of support. 10 of the 11 businesses that are in our immediate building signed that petition. And then the four businesses that didn't sign from the 16 of 20 just weren't available. We weren't able to access them or talk to them. And basically, everybody that we talked to, nobody refused, and most people were overwhelmingly supportive of our business.
Sir, if you could give me one minute?
Yes.
If you could go back to the allotted parking spaces?
Yeah.
41 to 46, or whatever it was?
This one right here?
Twenty-nine and forty-one and twenty-six and forty-eight. So, what you're telling me there is our staff missed these parking spots, or that they're available for you to park on?
No, so they've considered the forty- They considered the forty-eight spaces. What we did was we looked at the peak hours of operation, and we looked at all of those. The building to- This building over here is part of the same complex, and as you can see, where our building is right here backs right up to that area as well. And, you know, essentially, we would find that most people would park in these areas as far as accessing our building.
So, how many parking places do we have available?
Twenty-six, twenty-nine, fifty-five.
Where does the forty-one and the forty-eight come from?
So, these are total spots. The difference between those are spots that were currently being used, whether by other businesses' employees, by their customers, whoever it may be.
You said we took, what you said then is we took into consideration everything that was available for your business, right? Okay. All right, I'm sorry to interrupt. That's what I was trying to get to. I didn't understand. Thank you.
So, summarize on the surrounding businesses. Everybody we talked to didn't see a conflict in parking, didn't see a conflict in our hours of operation. As far as the third spot, safety and customer access, in order to ensure adequate access for our potential customers, especially given the type of climate that we have here in Nevada, we were looking to add one of the following. Keep in mind, these are intended to enhance access from the back of the facility, particularly during inclement weather. We'll either add a rear entrance to the facility, which we have doors available to do, or construct a sidewalk along the south side of the business so that people can come around and enter from the front. In conclusion, we feel that we've addressed the concerns of the planning commission due to the insufficient parking. Parking study that we did shows the availability is above what they had recommended. The impact on the surrounding businesses, we got the support of sixteen of the twenty businesses, none of them refused. Customer access to the facility from the rear parking area, and which will provide a way for them to get in. And, you know, so that's basically the presentation. Most part of the fact of the matter is that, you know, we have done everything that the city has asked us to do as far as providing documentation, providing traffic reports, parking studies. You know, we're not independently wealthy, we're not Tesla, we're not Google, Apple coming in here. You know, we're a family who's looking to open a small business. And as a result, have spent a lot of our life savings to put this together. Basically tomorrow, your vote affects us one of two ways. A no vote, you know, will lost tens of thousands of dollars in expenses during this four-month-long conditional use process, mostly in lease payments. We'll have lost additional tens of thousands of dollars to break our lease. And then, as a result, we'll have to recoup, you know, years of our lives to earn that money back in what we've lost. Additionally, a vote to remand the decision back to the city planning commission for us is the same as a no vote. We can't afford to delay an additional month for another planning commission meeting because we've invested so much in this process so far. But if you vote to overturn, what we're looking at is a thirty-day sprint to get our doors open to a company who's already expressed an interest in our business. We'll work towards- Obviously generating some revenue for the city itself. We'll create a handful of jobs. And most importantly, we're going to give kids and adults a safe, fun place where they can beat the heat, bond with family and friends, and just have a good time. Thank you.
Okay, questions? So, you have questions of staff or from?
Well, I'll let Ron finish. I think he still has questions.
So you were still up?
Yeah, I just had a couple-
Let's go with Ron and then Charlene.
Okay. And then if, Mr. Cassie, if you'd like to speak, is that you, sir?
No, Mr. Cassie's not here.
He's not here. Okay, so you said you were willing to either put a sidewalk alongside of the building. I think a door would be cheaper, I'm not really sure, but for me, that would solve a lot of the issues as far as access, so they don't have to walk all the way around. Okay, thank you.
I think probably my question is more for staff. So, thank you for your presentation. I appreciate the information.
Adams.
Sir, other than the, what's the traffic study and the approval from the adjoining businesses, what new evidence have you presented today that you did not present to the planning commission? Those, okay. So they were not given an opportunity to consider that?
Mr. Bear.
My question is, well, I just want to say the same. I think putting something in the back is probably the wisest, not the sidewalk around. Part of it is if there's trucks coming or whatever like that, but it seems that the parking portion is being taken care of. And it seems that, well, I'll agree that. I don't see the, I don't see the problem with it. So I'm not seeing the, if, where it was before without the back parking, I actually, it was very easy to see people trying to run across that street or anything like that, so I can definitely see if that's where the concern was. But with parking in the rear and people that'll come in the rear and then you don't have that, I don't see this as an abnormal use of our facility.
Mr. Lawson.
And I don't want to sound harsh, but it's going to come off that way, you know? We hear this all the time, that, you know, it's somehow now my problem that you guys didn't do your homework. So, I'm not appreciative of that. And it's not staff that is setting any of these rules, and they're not singling you guys out by any stretch of the imagination. These are ordinances. These ordinances have been in place, and they were there before you signed your lease. So, as harsh as it sounds, it's not really my problem about your lease or your breaking of the lease or that. However, I do think, as Mr. Adam pointed out, the planning commission didn't get to see the two surveys that you did. And I think for my way of thinking that this needs to go back to the planning commission so that they can do their job fully. And I think that, to me, it's kind of a no-brainer. It should get approved. If not, bring it back to city council, and I'll lead the charge on that. But everything you've done after the fact is good. I wish you'd have done it upfront.
And real quick to address that, again, we were given a set of items that we need to give to the city planning commission and the staff in order to be considered for the conditional use permit. At no time did the impact to the surrounding businesses or the parking come up as one of those items. So what we had provided as far as this additional information is in response to the way that the planning commission decision played out.
That's it for me.
Just drive it.
Yeah, so your lease allows you, how many spots again?
Eleven.
Eleven, and then we're looking at twenty-three, right? So, how, I guess, are they going to allow you to borrow, you know, twelve more from other businesses, or?
Their stance as far as speaking with them is that additional parking is open to whoever needs it. So if the graphics company that's on the far mirrored end side of our business has a customer who needs parking, but there's no available parking in front of there, they can park anywhere else in the facility.
Armando and Jacque, parking spaces that we're allowing them to have is twenty-three? If there's only eleven, is that what I'm hearing?
Mayor Martina, members of the city council, Armando, analysis, community services director. It's the code, per code, the uses require twenty-three, a minimum of twenty-three parking spaces.
What happens down the road? There must be other buildings here that there's uses in that have been approved for, or special use permit or whatever, a special use for more parking spaces than they should have. Is that not right?
Well, there are, I mean, and we're not, certainly, we're not privy to, you know, what's in all of those leases, correct? But, I mean, there are provisions in the zoning code to consider, for example, off-site parking. So, when the city staff did their analysis of the application, you know, we looked at the site, and so, the, you know, if we can go back to the- If we can go back to the vicinity map, we looked at the parking that was available on the one parcel that the building is located on. As has been indicated by Mr. Meyer, the properties to the west, could you point to? The property of the west, as it turns out, those are all owned by the same entity that owns the building that this uses in. This is its own parcel, so our analysis is based on the parking available on that parcel. The zoning code does allow for off-site parking in the industrial area. And so, certainly, for example, one option would be in terms of making sure that there is sufficient parking available to this particular business would be to, you know, require by condition that the property owner and the applicant in this instance demonstrate that there is additional parking off-site to serve the customers of that business.
You know, I really like this business. I think what they want to do is super, I think it really took, well, anywhere you put it, well, parking, all that puts it out there. I just wonder what happens in the future, you know? You get more people. Special use pieces like that. Sooner or later, we're going to get overparked, or not going to get a very overparked. Who suffers then? These guys, somebody else that's getting their last? Well, I don't, I don't, well, and maybe there's no answer to that, I don't know. That's something that concerns me. Who suffers in the future if there's no parking? I think these guys have a great plan that, I think their business there, what they do is, will be very successful. I'm worried about what may happen as far as- The thing I want to say is I'd rather we make a decision to get overparked and add back the money. Yeah, I'm not looking for a reason, just to set it back to them, to get down the road. I think we should, your decision made, because I don't see why there's not any reason to make additional information if we want, if we have, when you can make some adjustments.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll indulge me, I'd like to offer a viewpoint on both of your concerns. And actually, as a preliminary matter, if it has not so been done at your direction, I'd like Mr. Meyer's presentation to be incorporated into the record and collected by the city clerk, please. First, with respect to who suffers as it relates to a property being overparked, I think that's certainly the concern of the planning staff, it's the concern of the planning commission. It's why, in this case, we're looking at the eleven parking spaces that are allocated in the lease and essentially asking, well, of the other forty, of the forty-some-odd spaces, how many of them are specifically allocated in a lease? How many of them are taken up? What is your plan to provide the additional twelve spaces? Is it a reciprocal parking agreement on the property to the west? Is it an agreement with your neighbors there in the complex? Where are we coming up with those twelve? Are there even twelve free spaces that aren't already dedicated to other businesses in the area? And so, when you look at allowing recreational uses in primarily industrial areas as a policy question, this is the reason we use the CUP. This is why this tool is in place. It's to mitigate the anticipated impacts of this unlike business there in the industrial area. And so, it's a question that may well have an answer, but it's not a question that was answered satisfactorily at the planning commission stage. And then, to your other point, Mr. Mayor, respectfully, when we suggest a remand to the planning commission, perhaps this case is not admittedly the best case to make that point with. But the reason we do that is that, the reason we suggest that is that it prevents people on bigger projects, on things that have hydrological studies, large-scale traffic studies, things of that nature, from essentially sandbagging the planning commission and withholding information and then bringing the fight to the city council because they think it's a more receptive audience.
That makes sense. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I'm looking at, the site does have forty-eight spaces, and of which there are allotted eleven. Are the other spaces, like, do they have signs on them that say they're for the other businesses? Are they assigned parking for the other businesses of that forty-eight?
Councilwoman Bybee, they do not have signs on them, to our understanding. However, it is reasonable to assume at this juncture that if eleven spaces are allocated in the lease to rival enterprises, then X number of spaces are allocated in the leases for the other businesses in the complex. However, we do not have an answer to that question at this time.
Okay, because I think, for me, it really is, I think a lot of reasons why this is not, the parking for me is not an issue. They're off-hours, they're peak hours, the weekends, and when you have cars coming, you've got a lot of drop-off and pickup because you've got minors, so you've got kids. And in each of those vehicles coming and going, as far as the trucking company is concerned, you've got anywhere from two to three to four to five people in a vehicle. If a mom is dropping off her kids and their friends, you've got multiple occupants, more than the average one person per car, coming to that building for other business. So you don't have the need for, even how much need for parking, a lot of it is going to be drop-off. Even when they come for parking, you know, one family will have a carload of people, so if you had five people there, or ten people, you might have two or three cars, not ten cars. So, I like the project. I think it fits with the industrial. I disagree with the planning commission on its fitting, you know, the, what was it? Compatible use, because we have seven other minor recreational facilities in our industrial area. We have truck traffic throughout the industrial area of Sparks that comes and goes on all of our major arteries and in and out of the businesses. So we already, whether it's gymnastics or trampoline or batting cages, that's happening already. I also am concerned because where the other businesses in this building, why this build, why this, I kind of feel like this business is being, is kind of being singled out because where the other businesses for their parking needs. I guess because it's, and the others are just straight industrial, is that correct?
No, they require conditional use permits.
Okay, so, did we require any of this for other businesses that were coming in on their parking, if they were only given four spots? Were they, I mean, I feel like they're in compliance. I support the staff, our staff, our planning staff, who looked at all of these and recommended the planning commission to approve this because I know how thorough our staff is. And I respect your, the planning staff's decision and recommendation, and I support it. And, you know, I would like to see us approve it today and not delay because I think the additional information helped us today. But I think the information that's presented to the planning commission and their reasons for denial, I don't agree with. I think the information was there. And your staff obviously did, or they wouldn't have recommended approval. So I do support approving this today. Thank you.
Chad, is there a need for you to go right now, or can we listen to some others first?
Is there a need for what?
I see your name up there to speak. Is it on this particular?
It is.
Okay, go ahead and take the question. Please, go ahead.
The problem that I'm hearing here is that it's one of precedential value in that, as Councilman Lawson pointed out, if you're going to overturn the planning commission, that should be based upon the evidence that was presented to the planning commission. Have new evidence being presented to you, and much of the discussion, much of the comments that I'm hearing now, are comments better left to and considerations made by the planning commission itself. I don't know what the planning commission would say about this new evidence. I don't know if it was vetted. I just don't know. But you're taking, you're essentially taking something away from the planning commission on the basis of information that the planning commission never had available to it. And by overturning the planning commission on that-
I just think it's a bad precedent set.
And as Mr. Thornley pointed out earlier, it doesn't, you know, it won't prevent future applicants from going before the planning commission.
Hearing what the complaints are, and then coming in there with a whole new presentation.
Now, you are sitting as the planning commission, and you're undermining or circumventing what it is that the planning commission was set up for in the first place. Thank you.
Any comments? We have Ron and we have Mr. Lawson.
You know, in this, in this whole facility, they're all shared parking spaces, so Councilwoman Bybee mentioned a business that has four parking spaces- Bybee mentioned a business that has four parking spaces, if they had a fifth or sixth customer, believe me, they'd take any parking spots they can find, so those are shared spaces. I think that putting a door in the back actually solves our problem, and, and Mr. Attorney, it's, we have an option to override the planning commission and approve this, it's in here. If, if we couldn't do it, if it was better to do it another way, that shouldn't be in here. And if we decide to override the planning commission, we just tell them, I'm sure that they're fine with the evidence that was presented to us, so.
I think what the city attorney is saying is that, if it is, if it is the council's preference to overturn the decision of the planning commission, then it needs to be done explicitly on the evidence that was presented to the planning commission. Evidence that was presented today in the form of the parking study and in the form of the letters of support need to be specifically.
But we can reverse it if we want to.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Lawson?
Correct me if I'm wrong, you can't label a parking spot in a common place like this anyways for your particular business.
I suspect, Councilman Lawson, that pursuant to the terms of the lease, you probably could. They just have not.
That's a Sparks ordinance, if I remember correctly, because we have a problem with that in some of our centers where they label up the spots and, and then nobody can park anywhere, because we don't know who to sue.
It would depend on, you know, the nature of the contractual agreements between the parties, so if there are, if there is in fact reciprocal parking agreements or reciprocal parking easements, for example, then, you know, typically something like that would not be allowed, the, the.
Even if we knew what the other leases said, and they may all get 11 spots on, I don't know how many part, businesses are in there, but maybe they just divided it up equally per square footage, I don't have any clue how they do that either, but the bottom line is they could park anywhere. My concern is, what if the other parcel sells? So, to me, I wouldn't use the other parcels as parking, I would use the parcel it sits on, because it's quite possible that parcel could sell at a future date and they would not allow reciprocal parking over there.
That was the genesis of, of the question by staff as to whether or not, whether or not the other leases allocated spaces, and if so, how many? Because obviously there are 46, 48 spaces on the, on the site, and it's entirely possible that there are free spaces that are unallocated, and there may be 12 of them, we simply don't know.
And to your point, and.
I'm going to still recommend that we send it back to planning commission. I agree with you 100 percent. I can see this on a major project, that you get sandbagged, and all the evidence comes to us, and now we're acting as a planning commission. I don't, I don't want to be in that position, and I don't want to put our planning commission in that position. I think there needs to be some solidarity between the council and the planning commission so they can do their job, so we don't have to do their job. Not tough at all for me to make a decision, Gino, but I, I also don't want to circumvent those guys. I know.
Put your, put your seatbelts on, I know you can.
Do you have something on germane to this particular discussion?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John Martini, the community services director, some thoughts for the council, that you are leaning towards overturning and making a decision today, I understand that, that is kind of how Sparks does business quite often. There are some concerns I have for the mitigations that are covered in the conditions of approval. So please be aware that if you are going to approve it, you are approving those conditions that came along with the recommendation from staff. Some considerations I would have if you are going to get to the point where this council may choose to approve it, I would like a recess so that staff can discuss some additional conditions that may need to come in. For instance, I understand that the planning, or the, the city council today does, does view the ability to enter, or, or enter the building from the rear, or provide some form of access so that if you park in the back of this building, you can get to the front. I've heard the council today say that a back door may be a good solution. Well, of the many hats we wear in community services department, one of them is building and safety, I would have a concern that if you condition it to just a rear door, that the interior of the building, when you look at exit space and all the things your building official, Mark Miranda, has to look at, this will become an egress for, for the business as well as an entrance. It could really start limiting space, and that it may be wise to create a condition that says from a rear door or an exterior, leave that option open, because I would not want to hamstring Mr. Meyer with a specific condition that then eats up a lot of, of the recreational area, or perhaps could cause a lot of problems in the building code analysis. So, I, there are some comments like that, I think that are important, so if you do lean towards approval, recess so that we can discuss some additional conditions. If we are going to consider the availability, the parking to the parcel to the west, we need a condition for reciprocal parking easement as well, so that we know for a fact that if that is germane to your decision, that it is insured through, through a condition. And that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, John. Let's move on, we've got two more to speak here. Charlene, go ahead and then Ron.
John, can you stay for a second? So can you, can you tell me today, if we approve today, what are those, I'm looking in here to find what conditions, and, do we have conditions that are here today?
Yes, they were attached to the.
We've got, like, three pages, let me know which, which ones we're looking at.
Absolutely.
And can we add a condition, Mr. Adams, can we add a condition that is not on our agenda? Can I, can I, or, Doug, can you answer that? Can we add, if, can another condition be added?
So, Councilwoman Bybee, in your staff report?
Yes.
If you go in about, I'm going to call it seven or eight pages, and get into the staff report that was sent to the planning commission, that the county.
Attachment A or B?
Yes, it should be attachment B.
Okay.
And if you go to the end of that, you will see three conditions that staff posed to the planning commission. It's exhibit one of attachment B.
Say, thank you, page would help me. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't have.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay. So, well, well, I will read through those, but I guess what I wanted to comment, on, on the whole issue, my support for the project and for approving it today is based on what was presented to the planning commission. The other information we received today is helpful, but I am, I am fine with what was presented to the planning commission, I do not need the additional information in order to approve it today. What was presented there suffices for me to approve it, and the fact that it is a use that we want to see, it's a great use, I think it doesn't differ from, it's looking what we're trying to put out in the industrial area in our floodlot of businesses that really kind of make more sense, so I do not have any issues with this project as presented to the planning commission as far as my support. Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open it to the public. Anyone want to speak to this particular area? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the council for action, close the public hearing. Mr. Smith?
I'd like to make a motion, but I need some clarification from you, because I want the back doors included in this motion. So what do I need to put into the motion?
Well, I'm going to.
Need to take a recess?
I'm going to defer, well, before we get there, I'm going to defer a little to council, or to, to my counselor here, because Councilwoman Bybee brought up an interesting issue. She basically stated, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, Councilwoman, that the original staff report from staff as conditioned and presented to the planning commission, she is comfortable with that and is disregarding the additional evidence that was presented today, and your decision is based on the original analysis, nothing that Christian Meyer showed us today. Okay, that's one, one way I'm looking at it. The other one is if, if other councilmen are feeling that the evidence presented today is germane to your decision, given that, talking about additional off-site parking, entrance ways, being germane to what you're choosing, then I would like to add some conditions.
And so with the motion, you want to take a recess?
Probably more explicit direction as to what you're looking for in a condition, and then, yes, a recess so that we would have an opportunity to write something.
Make the motion.
No, I, what I'd like you to do, Councilman Smith, is, is just tell John exactly what you want, and then ask for a five-minute recess so we can go make that happen.
I believe that the evidence presented today made me want to approve this thing, and it's my, it's my words, I'll make the motion, so what conditions do I need to make sure that they put a door, sidewalk, in or both, or whatever we need to, to move this project along?
Thank you.
The city council is the, is the final say on these things, we don't have to go back to the planning commission, we just need to let them know what we're doing to keep them in the loop because they're a vital part of what we do.
City manager Driscoll, given that, I would like staff to have a five-minute recess to present those, to, to come up with those conditions for our council.
I'm making two and a half, we got to deal.
Five minutes, fine, thanks, John.
I think it's good.
Okay. Nope. Said a bad person.
I'm protecting the chambers.
Call this, aren't you up here? Let's call this meeting back to order, we got the law firm of Dewey, Cheatham, and Howe coming up, so. Go ahead, boys.
Mayor, Doug Thornley, assistant city attorney, for the record, after, after the council's deliberations conference with staff in the, in the room there, we're going to propose that, that two conditions be added to the conditional use permit, the council is, of course, free to take them or leave them, and the applicant should be invited down to explore their concurrence with the, with the proposal. The first is that the applicant provide and maintain with an adjacent property owner a reciprocal parking and access agreement that would essentially allow for sufficient parking for, for the use. The second condition that staff thinks is appropriate, based on, again, council comments, is that the applicant establish, provide alternate access to the west side of the property to the approval of the administrator, which would include the director of community development, fire marshal, et cetera.
If we can ask them to come in, Christian, will you come down?
Come on down. I'm sorry, I'm going to turn down the front. I'll be used to it.
Just give him the gap.
Go ahead, sir.
So as far as the three conditions that had previously been outlined were agreeable to those, as far as a reciprocal parking agreement, we don't see that as an issue considering the same owner owns all of this space here, so they own all of those buildings, again, we don't foresee a problem with that.
Don't forget, that, that kind of stuff sometimes goes away.
It does.
Pieces get sold, and, just wanted to have that in the back of your mind.
And if it does, we'd be happy to work with whoever the new property owner is to work something out. And then as far as providing rear access, we've already said that that's something we're willing to do, we saw that as a potential concern through the planning commission, so we're, we're fine on all accounts.
All right. That satisfy, Doug?
I, honestly, I have one thing, just for the sake of a clear record, and that is that the, that the rear access, Councilman Smith, everybody needs to understand that that, that does come with some challenges that were outlined by Mr. Martini, and it may take the form of a sidewalk, which may be a common area and may require landowner approval and everything else, it may not be something that is actually workable in, in practice, and so we'll start there, but we'll see where it, where it ends up.
The, Mark would go out there and say, if you want to put this door here, you got to do this, and you got to do that, and change, change everything that goes.
Right, it might be a building code issue, it might be a fire code issue, we simply don't have enough information as we sit here today to tell you exactly how it'll work out, which is why we're proposing a condition that suggests an, an alternate path of access from the west side of the property, so whether that takes the form of a, a rear access door or.
So, whether that takes the form of a rear access door, or whether that takes the form of a delineated sidewalk along the southern boundary of the property, we'll see what works.
Okay, we're trying to help you, Christian. If you can agree to those, I'll make a motion.
Real quick, just to address that, we currently have a rear door entrance here, and then there's a small sidewalk that comes around to another entrance right here, which would be the same as the front with open glass doors. So, just to address that potential concern.
Okay, one thing, I have, does the...
Yes, sir.
It's open for someone to make a motion, so...
Okay. I move to reverse the decision of the planning commission and approve the conditional use permit request associated with PCN 17-0030 with the amendments presented by staff. Does that cover it?
With both conditions?
With both conditions presented by staff.
For a total of five conditions?
For a total of five conditions. That's exactly what I was going to say. I knew it. Second?
Second.
Can we have a motion by Mr. Smith? Second by Mr. Bybee to reverse the... Planning commission. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes three to two with Abbott and Lawson. No. Okay. Winner winner, chicken dinner. Comments from the public again? Anyone comment? Comments from the agency and Chief Administrative Officer, Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have an announcement. The following committee appointment is available. The Sierra Arts Foundation, one member for a one-year term. Person who's interested in serving on this committee should complete the community service application available from the city clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.ciasparks.us. Click on Government on the webpage, then under Boards and Commissions, click Volunteering for the Sparks Board of Commission. Fill out the online application and submit. Applications will be accepted until the close of business on Monday, July 31st of 2017 at 4:00 PM. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, seeing none for the business board. Thank you.
I had a question. He had something.
I had a question real quick, I'm sorry. Yeah. Quick, sir. I just wanted to put out there and see if we could get information on what it would take to possibly have a community garden area and what that looks like. It's kind of something that's happening in different places, and I'd like to know in the future if I can get some information on that. And I think it's something that, I know we have some different land around that possibly could be used for something like that, and I'd like to know what it would take to open up that kind of idea.
Mr. Driscoll is taking us.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Dare.
I'd like to call to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of Monday, July 24th, with a roll call. Here. Abbott. Lawson. Smith. Smith.
Here, here, sir.
Martini.
Driving.
Dare.
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams.
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Item number three, public comment. Do I have any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, move on to item four, point one, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Dare? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor, or please vote. Sorry.
Do you get yours run?
Okay, pass issue unanimously. Item number five, five point one, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of June 26th, 2017. Do I have any corrections or additions or a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve by Agency Member Smith, second by Agency Member Lawson. Please vote.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Item number six, six point one, report of claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period of June 8th, 2017 through July 5th, 2017. Do I have a motion to approve? Agency Member Dare, motion to approve, second by Agency Member Martini. Please vote.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Item six point two, presentation and possible discussion of projects and redevelopment areas one and two. Mr. Ornellis.
Sir, I'm by me, members of the agency. I am Armando Ornellis, the Assistant Community Services Director. This is intended as a pretty informal presentation. What I thought I would do this afternoon is go through the Victorian Square area, and if I may have the graphic, please. Basically, just kind of walk through what's going on downtown in terms of our projects. And then, I was going to jump over to the Marina District and do something similar there. So, in terms of Victorian Square, in terms, and I'm going to be generally working from west to east here, obviously, the two blocks here, that Fountain House is being constructed on, Mr. Witt reports that construction is essentially complete. The project has reached, actually, 90% leasing, and anticipates being fully leased here in the next 30 to 60 days, if I'm recalling our conversation correctly. Pardon me. He is even working on his takeout loan, because he's, you know, he's achieved those targets so readily. Moving to the other portion of the Fountain House project, which is the two mixed-use parcels, they are both under construction. The target date for completion of the buildings is currently in early December. He is anticipating that there may, at that point, still be tenant improvements to be undertaken. He was preparing the leases and the standards, criteria, et cetera, to be able to go out and begin the process for leasing the retail spaces. And that would be the retail spaces that, you know, basically represent the half of the parcel that faces the plaza. And so, Mr. Witt is moving forward with that process. So, again, he's looking at early December for the shelves, and then tenant improvements based on leasing for those spaces. With regard to Silverwing's Bridges project on the northern parcel here, which is the one adjacent to the parking structure, Mr. Witt is estimating that the parking deck structure will be substantially complete in approximately the next month, and then they will begin framing for the residences, the two floors of residences that sit atop that parking structure. And he is anticipating that completion of the north building should be finished prior to the end of this calendar year. In terms of the south building here, the, his most immediate objective is, you know, there's a lot of utility work going on in the alley here between the northern and southern halves of the block. This area is important for purposes of the larger special events that are coming up. And so, he is focused most immediately in terms of having this alley complete and usable by August 11th. Beyond that, he anticipates that the south building should be complete during the second quarter of 2018. So, we're a little less than a year out, I think, in terms of that south building. I am, just a heads up here, if you will, Mr. Witt is asking for the city and the agency to consider allowing for a connection between this parcel and our parking structure, essentially from parking structure to parking structure, to accommodate some possible need on the part of Bridges for some additional parking. I am going to be working on that agreement here over the next couple of weeks, and we'll be bringing that to the agency board and city council in approximately a month. So, again, that is something I wanted to alert you to, so that you were aware of it. So, that addresses the current group of Silverwing projects that are actually, you know, under development and under construction, as members of the council are aware. Moving westward here, this is the city's C Street parking garage. Mr. Witt and city staff have been in discussions about potentially, potential sale of this parking structure to Silverwing, so that he could develop additional residences here. The, you know, any such agreement would require that there be public parking maintained in the structure, essentially in perpetuity, that is available for other users that rely on that parking garage currently. So, that's an agreement that's being worked on. It depends in part on Mr. Witt determining that, in fact, he thinks he has a feasible project here. So, you know, we have been, we have city staff ordered a parking analysis, because basically, you know, we reached the conclusion that before we can contemplate, you know, allowing any parking for Bridges residents in the garage next to the structure, or disposing of this parking garage, we need to have a handle on parking in this Victorian Square area generally. We've commissioned a parking analysis, and we will be relying on that parking analysis in terms of any recommendations that staff will be making to the agency board and the city council. So, that's part and parcel of that. So, that...
Hang on just a second, Mr. Ornellis. Mr. Smith has a question.
The northern part of the Bridges, you said it'll be done by the end of the year?
Yes, that's what Mr. Witt is indicating.
Avenue of the Oaks, will it be open? I know that we're going to have construction on the two parcels right in front of the theater, but will they be able to access to the garage or get to the theater? Because that's the end of the year also.
Well, sir, I was going to move into an update about the Galaxy Theater proposal, if I might, and maybe that'll address some of that.
Do you want to, do you want to stop him right now? Yeah, if we can do that, then we'll move on to the other.
My question is on the Doughtys parking. Do they have parking spots assigned to them?
They...
Them as being the major cog in all of this.
They do not have any parking. They rely, you know, so we have a parking district that was established, you know, in the downtown area many years ago. It's actually incorporated into our Title 20, into our zoning code. So, basically, uses, for these existing uses, the first 10,000 square feet of space do not require any parking. Essentially, the premise was that they could rely on the city parking structures. So, there, you know, I think what we, you know, before we bring in you, an agreement that would propose for Bridges residents to be able to park in this garage, we will be looking to conclude, you know, on the basis of that parking analysis, that there is sufficient parking to accommodate existing users such as the Doughtys. Because, you know...
What I'm getting at, too, is that the Nugget on that may want to put a building there, and basically wipes out the parking around Doughtys. Doughtys, then their customers need to park in the parking lot.
That's correct. So, moving on, in terms of an update with regard to Sayafi Enterprises and their ownership of the theater property and Galaxy, you know, for, I think, for a number of reasons, Galaxy is not moving at the, forward at the pace that they anticipated initially. You know, it became very important to them when they realized that, in fact, customers would be having to go around this building here and enter here, they started looking for an alternative to that. And so, they are looking at creating a direct access right here, or if you see, the cursor is moving, essentially, from the city parking garage, the ground floor of the city parking garage into the theater, so that their patrons would have that direct access. So, we, I am expecting shortly a letter from Sayafi Enterprises that requests potentially two things. The first would be a modification in the agreement to reduce the number of theaters, because they are required by our incentive agreement to specifically have 14 theaters, to potentially reduce that number from 14 to 13. They're looking to determine through their, you know, their analysis of, you know, for the purposes of their design, whether they can salvage a 14 theater or not. But nevertheless, it may be necessary to amend it, to reduce that from 14 to 13 theaters, which I don't think, frankly, materially affects, you know, what we're looking to achieve here with an opening operating theater. The second is, you know, they are experiencing some delays in terms of the availability of steel for their project, and so, what I am anticipating is they're going to ask for some additional time to push the deadline for opening the theaters, which is currently December 31st of this year. Out beyond that, either the end of the first quarter or the end of the second quarter, and I think we're looking at probably the second quarter, so that we only have to do this once, in terms of an amendment. So, given that amended schedule, if you will, if Silverwing can complete, certainly the shelves here, complete the north building by the end of the year, we anticipate that access to the theater will be cleaned up, if you will, and, you know, when they get to a grand opening, that the access would be there, and it would, you know, you wouldn't have the same level of construction, certainly, that you have currently going on in that area now.
Just to follow my question, the north will be done. How about the south building? Will that close the Avenue of the Oaks?
Well, I think we'll, I don't know the answer to that question. I could find out, Member Smith. You know, there certainly is going to have to be the bridge, you know, to connect this, and so, I, you know, obviously, we'll be looking to manage this in conjunction with Silverwing Development to minimize disruptions and closures of Avenue of the Oaks. To the extent that it is necessary, then, you know, that may well be the case. But, you know, certainly, for example, if you are, you know, accessing this site or this parking garage, if you're coming down Pyramid Way, you know, there's certainly potentially access, you know, in through the front here. If a patron is coming from, you know, west, from the west, then, you know, they would more than likely, you know, exit at Rock, and then come, you know, come down Victorian, and then, you know, again, come in this way. So...
This may be late to ask this question, but next summer, are we going to be able to use that fountain?
We anticipate that we will be.
Fountain's not cut off. We're going to be able to use the fountain eventually.
The fountain is not operating this summer because of the immediate construction in this area with these two buildings.
But it's available hopefully next year. Okay, that's all right.
It's intended that that be restored, yes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, move on.
Okay, so, I talked about how, you know, where there's a potential project that's being discussed with Silverwing Development that would involve the use of the C Street garage. As I mentioned, you know, it'll be an imperative for city staff that we maintain some public parking in their garage that can adequately serve the needs of this in conjunction with other parking that's available in the area. So, other than that, you know, I think the only thing I would mention that I think, you know, probably most of the council is aware of, is that the former Bourbon Square property has changed hands fairly recently, and has been acquired by the owners of the Nugget. And so, in terms of their future plans, we will see formally, but...
So, we don't have, right now, we know the Nugget has purchased it, but we don't, they haven't presented plans or what their future plans are for the building or for the site.
No, they have not.
Okay. Thank you. I do have one more question on Victorian Square. From the streetscape work that we're planning to start, will that start after Rib Cookoff? And are we on schedule to start at the first phase?
I believe, and it may be that Mr. Exon has more up-to-date information about this than I do, but I think we're, I believe we're on schedule to move forward with bidding that first phase of that streetscape this fall.
Yeah, we're anticipating bidding that in September.
So, bidding it in September with work to begin?
I mean, it's a good project to do during the winter, early fall, so it would probably go to construction in probably the October, November timeframe.
Okay, so we'd be looking maybe after, because we have Pumpkinpalooza that would be in that same area?
Yeah.
So, avoiding that, but having the bid ready and ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are we finished with Victorian Square?
I am finished with Victorian.
Okay. Were there any other questions on Victorian Square before we move on to the Marina?
I could, but I...
Okay. If you can go ahead with the Marina, that'd be great.
Okay. The Marina District, as you know, is one of three sub-districts of redevelopment area two. This map is a little dated, obviously, in terms of the aerial, but in terms of current development in this district, on the west side of Marina Gateway Drive here on this parcel, this was acquired for development by an entity that includes Blake Smith. It is currently under construction, I believe. It is 240 apartments, garden-style, three-story, and so, that project is well underway. Moving south here, we have, on these parcels here, we have the two hotels, and that, you know, that project is under construction. So, those, I don't have timeframes in terms of their expected completion, but, you know, they're, I would expect that, you know, they're looking at something around the end of the year. Then finally, over here in the southeast corner, we have a number of parcels we have that are being developed with relatively small buildings, both restaurants, and there's a multi-tenant, small building of approximately 7,000 square feet. There is a Chick-fil-A planned for this corner over here as well, and there's other restaurants that are being contemplated. So, you know, there's, what I would say with regard to Legends overall is basically... In terms of the, the south building here, the, the, his most immediate objective is, you know, there's a lot of utility work going on in the alley here between the northern and southern halves of the block. This area is, is important for purposes of the, the larger special events that are coming up. And so he is focused most immediately in terms of having this alley complete and, and usable by August 11th. Beyond that, he anticipates that the south building should be complete during the second quarter of 2018. So we're a little less than a year out, I think, in terms of, in terms of that, that south building. I am, just a heads up here, if you will. Mr. Witt is, is asking for the city and the agency to consider allowing for a connection between this parcel and, and our parking structure, essentially from parking structure to parking structure, to accommodate some, some possible need on the part of Bridges for some additional parking. I am going to be working on that agreement here over the next couple of weeks and we'll be bringing that to the agency board and city council in approximately amount, approximately a month. So again, that is something I wanted to alert you to so that you were aware of it. So that, that addresses the, the current group of Silverwing projects that are actually, you know, in, in, under development and under construction, as members of the council are aware. Moving westward here, this is the city's C Street Parking Garage. Mr. Witt and city staff have been in discussions about potentially, potential sale of this parking structure to Silverwing so that he could develop additional residences here. The, you know, any, any such agreement would, would require that there be public parking maintained in the structure on, essentially in perpetuity that is available for other users that rely on that parking garage currently. So that, that's an agreement that's, that's being worked on. It depends in part on Mr. Witt determining that, in fact, he thinks he has a feasible project here. So, you know, we have been, we have, city staff ordered a, a parking analysis because basically, you know, we reached the conclusion that before we can contemplate, you know, allowing any parking for Bridges residents in, in the garage next to the structure or disposing of this parking, parking garage, we need to have a handle on parking in this Victorian Square area generally. We've commissioned a parking analysis and we will be relying on that parking analysis in terms of any recommendations that staff will be making to the agency board and the city council. So that's part and parcel of that. So that, that.
Hang on just a second, Mr. Ornellis. Mr. Smith has a question.
The northern part of the Bridges, you said it'll be done by the end of the year?
Yes, that's what, that's what Mr. Witt is indicating.
The Avenue of Oaks, will it be open? I know we're going to have construction on the two parcels right in front of the theater, but will they be able to access to the garage or get to the theater? Because that's the end of the year also.
Well, sir, I was, I was going to move into an update about the Galaxy Theater proposal, if I might, and maybe that'll address some of that. Okay.
Do you want to, do you want to stop him right now? Yeah, if we can do that, then we'll move on to the other.
My question is on the Doughtys Parking. Do they have parking spots assigned to them?
They.
Them as being the major cog in all of this.
They do not have any parking. They rely, you know, so we, we have a parking district that was established, you know, in, in the downtown area many years ago. It's actually incorporated in our, into our Title 20, into our zoning code. So basically, uses, for these existing uses, the first ten thousand square feet of space do not require any parking. Essentially, the, the premise was that they could rely on the city parking structures. So there, you know, I think what we, you know, before we bring in you an agreement that would propose for Bridges residents to be able to park in this garage, we will be looking to conclude, you know, on the basis of that parking analysis, that there is sufficient parking to accommodate existing users such as, such as the Doughtys. Because, you know.
What I'm getting at too is that the Nugget on that, they want to put a building there and basically wipes out the parking around Doughtys. Doughtys, then their customers either park in the parking lot.
That's correct. So moving on.
Thank you.
In terms of an update with regard to Sayafi Enterprises and their ownership of the, the theater property and, and Galaxy, you know, for, I think for, for a number of reasons, Galaxy is not moving at the, forward at the pace that they anticipated initially. You know, it, it became very important to them when they, when they, they realized that, in fact, customers would be having to go around this building here and enter here. They started looking for an alternative to that and so they are looking at creating a direct access right here, if you see the, the cursor is moving, essentially from the city parking garage, the ground floor of the city parking garage into the theater so that their patrons would have that direct access. So we, we, I am expecting shortly a, a letter from Sayafi Enterprises that requests potentially two things. The first would be a modification in the agreement to reduce the number of theaters because they are required by our incentive agreement to specifically have fourteen theaters to potentially reduce that number from fourteen to thirteen. They're, they're looking to determine through their, you know, their analysis of, you know, for the purposes of their design, whether they can salvage a fourteenth theater or not. But nevertheless, it may be necessary to amend it, to, to reduce that from fourteen to thirteen theaters, which I, I don't think frankly materially affects, you know, what, what we're looking to achieve here with an opening operating theater. The second is, you know, they are, they're experiencing some, some, some delays in terms of the availability of, of steel for their project. And so what I am anticipating is they're going to ask for some additional time to push the deadline for opening the theaters, which is currently December 31st of this year, out beyond that to either the, the end of the first quarter or the end of the second quarter. And I think we're looking at probably the second quarter so that we don't, we only have to do this once in terms of an amendment. So given that, given that amended schedule, if you will, if Silverwing can complete the, certainly the shelves here, complete the north building by the end of the year, we anticipate that access to the theater will be, will be cleaned up, if you will. And, and, you know, when they get to a grand opening, that, that the access would be there and it would, you know, you wouldn't have the same level of construction certainly that you have currently going on in that area now.
Just to follow my question, the north will be done. How about the south building? Will that close the Avenue of the Oaks?
Well, I, I think we'll, I don't know the answer to that question. I could find out. Member Smith, you know, there certainly is going to have to be the, the bridge, you know, to connect this. And so I, you know, obviously we'll be managing, looking to manage this in conjunction with Silverwing Development to minimize disruptions and closures of Avenue of the Oaks. To the extent that it is necessary, then, you know, that may, will be the case. But, you know, certainly, for example, if you are, you know, accessing this, this site or this, this parking garage, if you're coming down Pyramid Way, you know, there's certainly potentially access, you know, in, through the, the front here. If a patron is coming from, you know, west, from the west, then, you know, they would more than likely, you know, exit, exit at Rock and then come, you know, come down Victorian and, and then, you know, again, come in this way. So.
This may be late to ask this question, but next summer, are we going to be able to use that fountain? Or?
We anticipate that we will be.
Fountain's not cut off. We're going to be able to use the fountain eventually.
The, the fountain is not operating this summer because of the immediate construction in this area with these two, these two buildings.
But it's available hopefully next year. Okay, that's all.
That'd be restored, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, move on.
Okay, so I, I, I talked about how, you know, where there's a potential project that's being discussed with Silverwing Development that would involve the, the use of the C Street Garage. As I mentioned, you know, it'll be an imperative for city staff that we maintain some public parking in their garage that, that can adequately serve the needs of, of this in conjunction with other parking that's available in the area. So other than that, you know, I think the only thing I, I would mention that I think, you know, probably most of the council is aware of is that the, the former Bourbon Square property has changed hands fairly recently and has been acquired by the, the owners of the Nugget. And so in terms of their future plans, we will see formally, but.
Okay, so we don't have right now, we know the Nugget has purchased it, but we don't, they haven't presented plans or what their future plans are for the, for the building or for the site.
No, they have not.
Okay. Thank you. I do have one more question on Victorian Square. From the, the Streetscape work that we're planning to start, will that start after Rib Cook Off? And where, where are we on schedule to start at the first phase?
I believe, and, and it may be that Mr. Exon has more up-to-date information about this than I do, but I think we're, I, I believe we're on schedule to move forward with bidding that first phase of that Streetscape this fall.
Yeah, we're anticipating bidding that in September.
So bidding it in September with work to begin?
I mean, it, it's a good project to do during the winter, early fall. So it would probably go to construction in probably the October, November timeframe.
Okay, so we'd be looking maybe after, because we have Pumpkin Palooza that would be in that same area?
Yeah.
So avoiding that, but having the bid ready and ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are we finished with Victorian Square?
I am finished with Victorian.
Okay. Were there any other questions on Victorian Square before we move on to the Marina? Okay. If you can go ahead with Marina, that'd be great.
Okay, the Marina District, as you know, is one of three sub-districts of redevelopment area two. This map is a little dated, obviously, in terms of the aerial. But in terms of current development in this district, on the west side of Marina Gateway Drive here on this parcel, this was acquired for development by an entity that includes Blake Smith. It is currently under construction. I believe it is two hundred and forty apartments, garden-style, three-story. And so that, that project is well underway. Moving south here, we have the, in the, on these parcels here, we have the, the two hotels. And that, you know, that project is under construction. So those, I, I don't have timeframes in terms of their expected completion, but, you know, they're, I would expect that, you know, they're looking at something around the end of the year. Then finally, over here in the, in the southeast corner, we have a number of parcels we have, that are being developed with relatively small buildings, both restaurants. And there's a multi-tenant, small building of approximately thousand, seven thousand square feet. There is a Chick-fil-A planned for this corner over here as well. And there's other restaurants that are being contemplated. So, you know, there's, what I would say with regard to Legends overall is basically the, the project continues to build out. You know, we're, we're not that far from, you know, starting to, to get to a point where there's relatively little left to develop. The former Walmart site here, which was, is, for those of you that have been on the council for a while, may recall, in the original project plans was contemplated to be an RV dealership. We have had inquiries, pre-application meetings, and there's a proposal pending submittal for a RV dealership on that site. So it would be essentially with the term that they've used as electric remoter coaches. So, you know, that, you know, it, from the developer's perspective, certainly that's something that, you know, generates sales tax, a lot of sales tax, and would contribute to paying down on the bonds, on the star bonds. It's something, it's a use that would generate relatively little traffic. So some of the concerns that were associated with Walmart going on the site, you know, would be, would not, wouldn't, wouldn't exist with, with that particular project if in fact it comes forward in the form of a formal application.
Mr. Dare?
On the other side where land cap's sold, I don't, that, because they don't own that anymore, I believe, right? Or do they still own that?
I believe that has, that has, if, if it hasn't closed, it's, the sale is pending. Twenty acres, so there's, there's two parcels and they total about twenty acres.
They were talking about putting in many home, like apartments in there at one time, right?
Yeah, there is a, there is a, an administrative review approval for up to, I believe it's nine hundred and twenty units. The, the developer that is going to be acquiring it or has acquired this is, is contemplating probably something closer to six hundred units currently. They're contemplating that it would be developed in two stages. The first stage would be something similar to the, to the density over here on the east side of Marina Gateway Drive, you know, three-story garden walk-up. And then with the second phase, when the, when the market is, you know, a little further down the line and something more intense with structured parking, similar in, perhaps in some respects to what's being contemplated at Park Lane and the Park Lane side in Reno.
Part of my question is just that road. That road seems very, very, very tight. Even just driving down there now with them doing construction, the gates that are there and you imagine on both sides, I just anticipate that being an interesting ride. But obviously, you guys, you guys already planned for that. I wasn't.
Yeah, we will, we will take a fresh look at the traffic analysis and, and how this road functions when we go through the administrative review process for the, for the amended or revised project proposal, if you will.
Armando, on the project, the land cap is doing right on the Marina, the wraparound and the blue building. Do we have any timeframes on those?
Well, they, they, you know, it, I think there was, it was the groundbreaking ceremony. And then frankly, there wasn't anything necessarily coming vertical for a while. You know, I think there was, we all saw that, that dirt was moving around. There is vertical construction starting now. I, I don't have a timeframe for completion for you, though.
Did you have anything else on the Marina?
I do not have anything else to add on the Marina.
Okay, any questions on the Marina? Okay. I do want to thank you for presenting this and I want to thank Member Dare for requesting that we do periodic and it might not necessarily be every meeting. There might not be any new information. A lot of us were briefed individually as council members, but I think for public information, for, you know, our community to know what's going on, I think it's really valuable for people to kind of see what's happening. I think it's exciting. I try to share it with people. But I think in this format, it, it gives us the, the ability to provide this information to the public at, at large. So I appreciate it. Thank you for the work you did on that. Very much. Okay, I am on item number seven, seven point one, comments from the public. Do I have any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close that. Item seven point two, comments from the agency and chief administrative officer? Do I have any? Okay, seeing none. I need a motion to adjourn? So, so moved? We're adjourned.